Well, it is that time of year and I know everyone has many things to do, so I am going to open this public hearing. Let's see, we have a number of things. Do we have Mr. Robert Wood here? Yes, it looks like we do. So let me start with that. This is a virtual continued public hearing will be held Thursday, December 9th, 2021, 7:00 PM on the petition of Robert Wood for a variance from the front setback to construct a two-car garage on a property at 33 Anthony Road, North Reading, Mass., map 30 parcel 53 owned by Robert M. Wood Jr., according to the requirements outlined in the Dimensional and Density Regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Mr. Wood, if you are here, would you like to join us and tell us briefly what you have planned?
Yeah, so I'm actually just planning to do in addition to the house, which would be a two-car garage and redoing the first floor and adding a couple of bedrooms to above the garage.
Okay, see, I have in our package a schematic of the proposed addition and let's see, Kathy, I think you said you are not able to share your screen this evening. Is that right?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Let me see if I can send this to.
Madam Chair, if I can speak for a second on this. That's a future street and that's the only street that could actually, if the developer, which the lot in the back has been for years, it's been subject to possible development for the past 15, 20 years. And it really hasn't gone anywhere, but it's the only, only possibility for anybody to actually have a, a, a street into that real lot. And it's not really to subject this person to frontage, it's just that it's a future street. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear with that.
Thank you, Jerry. So, you know, I see it on the, on the plan as being a future street. And since it is a potential street that makes that what looks a bit like a side yard be a front yard. So we get the benefit of the additional setback of being 40 yards rather than 25. And I am not positive, given that I got this in a secure file, that I can share it with you. So be that as it may, unless someone there, one of my board members has the ability to share this plan. My firewall won't let me put it up. That being said, it looks like the proposed addition is, is that 35 feet from the future street sideline? 30, 35.3 feet.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's 35.
And we don't have any elevations. Mr. Wood, could you tell me again, how tall is the proposed addition? Is that a one-story or a two-story, two-story addition?
It would be a two-story.
Okay. And it looks like your septic is behind it. You still meet the setback requirements for the front yard. Do you, actually you don't. You'd need a variance both on the, for both fronts. The front on Anthony Road and the front on the future street. And you're already non-conforming to the setback on your westerly side. Great. Looks like, the way I'm seeing it, looks like you need a variance off two fronts and one side. That, well, you don't need a variance for the existing the non-conforming side, but you will need one for this increased for the addition for the front on Anthony and the front on future street.
Why would it be on the front for Anthony? It shouldn't be further. As far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, that it wouldn't be any further than my existing dwelling.
It's not, but your existing dwelling is in the setback and so you're increasing square footage in the setback. And you, do you happen to have any elevation showing what the proposed addition would look like?
I do not. Not readily, not readily developed that I could share.
Did LJR develop any, your, your engineering interest? Are these the only that you've gotten?
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Questions, Board?
Well, just, it takes note that the, all due respect, the, the elevations, especially when you're coming into a, you know, you're coming into a setback are are helpful to the board in terms of rendering a variance especially. And I think community planning even noted the same in their review of the, the project.
It's, that's the first I'm hearing of it.
All right, well, let us share that with you because that is something that we typically require. I hadn't even noticed the CPC's comments, but.
You know, Madam Chairman, if I might, in a memo dated November 8th from Community Planning to the Zoning Board, the committee noted, the commission noted, the application should contain more information, including an elevation drawing. I'm trying to scroll through this, excuse me, to see what if, look, the as well as a number of stories and grading plan for property to the septic system in what is proposed by the applicant at the end and and they just asked, they also asked about hardship, which is hasn't been brought up forward, but in, in terms of the, the elevation. And that, it's just, it's, it's a pretty common submission respectfully.
Uh, great. I don't have a real, from what I can see on this plan in terms of the massing of it, you know, doesn't, I don't have a problem with what I see that far, but typically we would request and receive the, the elevation so you can see what this would look like on the, on the lot, as well as to inform any neighbors of what will be, was being proposed. Do we have any butters or neighbors who are here to comment on this public hearing?
I don't see anybody looking to get acknowledged.
Hearing none. And I just lost my packet where to go. All right. So, and Mr. Wood, do you? I know, I know you're engineer or architect. In order to build this, we'll need to give you some proposed elevations. When do you think you might have those that you could share with us?
I mean, I can reach out to them tomorrow as soon as, as soon as I, as soon as, as soon as possible, so.
Okay. So what I would suggest, if we don't have any further comments, is for you, for us to continue your hearing, for you to provide those to us and then we can take a look at those at our next hearing.
I'm curious, Mr. Wood, is there a timeline, calendar on, on the project?
No, we're, we're still in the design phase. So this was, this was really step one, that we had the drawings rendered by the architect. We knew with the setback, with the existing septic, that we were going to have to kind of shift around to make sure that we didn't kind of impose into the septic setback. So yeah, this is just the original drawings.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I can't imagine, hopefully they're not thinking about pouring a foundation in the next several months.
No, we, we haven't even selected a builder. We're, it's still on the design phase.
Yeah, they, they shouldn't until spring, but all right, if that works for you, I would suggest that you request an extension. Do we have a meeting scheduled for next month? Kathy?
No, I was, I was looking at, it could either be the 6th or the 13th. I don't have any hearings waiting in the wings, so.
I will be gone, one of those. I just don't know what it is yet. So being said, does anyone else know what their schedule might be? January 6th or 13th?
Nothing. Kathy, aren't you on vacation one of those weeks?
I'm sorry, what?
No, I'm going the end of the month.
Okay, sorry. I thought I had that on my calendar.
It might be best to just put it as the middle of the month, given the holiday, in case somebody has to get notices out to proper publication or whatever. Just.
I agree. So let's say the 13th. Mr. Wood, for the formality of it, would you like to request an extension until January 13th?
Yes, please.
Wonderful.
And once those drawings are developed, if you could just have your, your people forward them, the sooner we get them in the file, all the better. It just is of great assistance.
Sure. Upload those right to the website or drop them off at Town Hall.
Kathy, can he email them to you at Town Hall?
He can either put them in the portal or he could bring them in physically. I think Jerry's probably going to want them physically anyway when he gets the building permit, but that's a little off.
I keep forgetting that we have our great portal now, so, yep. And yet they oh, it's, so upload them to the portal and Kathy, do you get, Kathy and Jerry, do you get alerted when something's been uploaded? So then you can go share it with us?
Yep.
Perfect. All right. All right, so we are continuing this until 13th. I just want to flag that on the calendar. Thank you, Mr. Wood. We will see you in a month.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Right, okay, moving on. What do we have next? 271 Main Street, continuation of the appeal of the building inspector for variance to install two electrical vehicle charges with scrolling signage. Applicant Michael Hirschberg, representative of Volta. Mr. Hirschberg, I see you there. Welcome back.
Thank you. Great to be back.
So, you know, we've had some, we've had a little time to, to think about this, or at least I have. And it seems like, you know, that the, the reason you need a variance is not because it's an electrical vehicle charger, but because it's, it's signage. And we have fairly, fairly robust signing, signage provisions in town. And it, and it's kind of curious from what it seems like you had gone to CPC originally for approval of the location.
Correct, yes.
And then it comes to us on a variance for the actual signage component of it. And the, the, the problem, problem here is the, essentially scrolling signage is not permitted. For a business, there's a limited number of exterior signs that they may have. We've already seen that plaza come in front of us a couple of times for their, for their main signage up on the street, which was expanded a couple of years ago to add another, a couple of feet, additional feet worth of signage on it. So I, I think we're, we're kind of in a tricky position here. And I say honestly, even though CPC approved the location as a frequent user of that parking lot.
Yes.
And the chaos that exists right in front of Stop and Shop. I, I don't, I wouldn't suggest putting a vehicle charger station right there. I mean, I think if there is appropriate space for it in that parking lot, it would be away from the front door someplace back in the side where you don't have someone who's taking up additional space, who is taking up additional time charging a vehicle in the, you know, the heavy, heaviest traffic flow spot of this center.
Um, so if I may, Madam Chairwoman, so I, basically the way Volta's business model works is in order to, you know, fund the free electric charging that we're passing back to our drivers. We do need to be in an area that captures a wide pedestrian audience. Ultimately, I mean, these stations are going up, I believe, if I'm just going to refer back to my plans here, I see a lot of plans all day. But these are both going, okay, they're going at little, one's going in a hash aisle kind of area at the end of a parking lane and the, and the other is going in a landscape island. So I mean, specifically with the second station being in a landscape island, it's out of the way as far as traffic is concerned. I certainly see the board's point about the first station being at kind of a curvature there in the roadway as drivers come into the parking lot. But ultimately, I mean, certainly I understand the traditional aspect of EV charging station like Tesla's and everybody else are being in the back of the store. It's just that we're unable to provide our business model in that way if we are at the back or at an area that's away. And I mean, ultimately, we're just trying to, Volta's sort of coming into this at the head of the curve, you know, as more people adopt EVs. They'll be more present in the, you know, in the parking lot as people continue to drive through. And we found that, you know, they're positioned in an area where there's low speed traffic anyway. And ultimately, I mean, we've not had any real incidents where our signs have been struck just because we, we protect them well. We'd be willing to, you know, follow the building inspectors' recommendations and requests or, excuse me, building inspectors' requirements as far as protecting the signage. If there was baller needs or something like that, that would, you know, be, would move us from being in the back to being up front and providing a safe area for our drivers to charge or for any electric vehicle charging, the public to charge.
To be candid, I was less concerned about the safety of your signage as the safety of pedestrians and other cars and the distraction that the signage might present to someone driving by the front of Stop and Shop when they should be looking at the crosswalk and then they're looking at signage instead.
Um, so to that point, so the way our stations are positioned too, they're meant to really, we use what's called the Volta V. So if you're at the front, I know it's kind of corny. If you're at the front of the store, the idea is that the screen would face toward the drive aisle. And so, and they also dim, you know, when the night, when, when it gets darker. It's like a cell phone. You know, that's off of a charger as it adjusts throughout the day, the screen will adjust. So it's not blind to the eye or overly eye-catching, so to speak. Really what we're trying to capture is pedestrians walking through and capturing it as they're walking into the store. That's how we can sell the advertisement space to our clients on the advertisement side. And so that's really what it's doing. I mean, we're not, when it sits in the, in a V format, I can show my pictures again if you'd like. We're not really trying to create, yeah, this is a good one. Hang on one second. I'm just going to share a screen if I might. So if you look here, so this is in Walpole as a present installation. Excuse me. Can everyone see this okay? So, I mean, it's truly, I mean, you can see this is the middle of the day. The screen is, is dark enough. I mean, it's, it's certainly visible. I'm not certainly, you know, trying to detract from that, but it's not meant to be bright or it's not, there's no animation that's like popping and things like that. These are static images that just change on quick flips. They're very, very quick. They don't, they're not meant to create, they don't dissolve. They don't do any of those things that might have kind of been those like fun PowerPoint things that I remember doing in school. They are really just quick flips and quick changes. And so really, I mean, they, again, just are capturing the drive aisle. And someone would really have to be looking out of their way in order to see it if they're driving into the parking lot. So that's just kind of what I just wanted to share there. And again, as they, as you get further away, the smaller and smaller they get. So this is going back further and further in the parking lot, just to kind of give a little bit of visual. Yeah, this is at the front of the store here. I mean, very hard to tell on a bright sunny day. This was, I think, in July. So this is much different than it looks right now, but certainly it's, you know, that's the idea is to not be over distracting, but still have our infrastructure in an area that we can still capture a pedestrian audience that's walking by.
Thanks, Michael. No, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, do we receive a letter from the the planning board?
I believe we received two memos from the planning board as well as, I believe we have a member of the planning board here who may want to share some thoughts on this as well. Before I turn it over to, for their input, though, you and Bob have comments or thoughts on this. I'd like to get your initial thoughts before we go to the public on this.
My concerns are basically that in its, it's I don't think our bylaws are really, had ever anticipated this kind of a signage request. And that concerns me in two, well, in two different ways. One, that we're not able, ideally equipped by the bylaw to possibly address this innovation in terms of signage. But at the same time, if we get ahead of it and we find ourselves posed with applications, and this, this is not to in any way describe, in any way speak ill, if, if a phrase of, of this application or the, the, the request therein. That it creates almost a a difficult way in which to gauge future applications. Slippery slope is too cliche in this case, and I don't think it's appropriate either. I understand the idea of, of the signage being attached to the electric vehicle charging promotion or opportunity, but that population is one that I don't really understand specifically for the town of North Reading in terms of who would access it. And inevitably, isn't it more about the signage than, than the charging? You know, that, so my focus in terms of this is the, the signage, and I know we haven't, this, this current board hasn't been posed with signage requests electronic in nature or, you know, sliding or whatever, changing images. But I, I do know of past boards that have been approached by business interests in this town and in the past haven't succeeded in those regards. And that it's not that we're tied to our past, but at the same time just by my nature and my own position, I, 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 I'm very cautious in terms of, of this, of this application. The scale of it I don't think is so much the issue as it is the underlying proposal. In this case, it's just probably the size of, it's probably smaller than most homes' televisions in terms of the screen size. But it's not that inevitably. It is, what does it present for future business applicants or owners that want to say, well, why can't I put something of a similar nature in a parking space that's probably closer to, in this case, Main Street or some other more travel route? And I I, I have a hard time gauging how to best weigh what could be a very, very likely situations that are going to be presented to us, which our bylaws are kind of not instructive on in terms of the nature of this signage. It's not, in other words, let me kind of put it more simply. This wouldn't be such a hard question if it was just a big neon sign, right? Because when I read the bylaw, it's almost as if they anticipated, you know, something that, you know, used to see in Washington Street in downtown Boston where I used to walk through as a child, a kid going to high school. Big flashy and that kind of nature. And I think the town always wanted to avoid that. And that's not the case here, but it's not that, it's just, it's not that it's the progeny of that, but it, there's a relationship there. And I have a sincere concern that you're going to find an interest on a more Main Street location that is going to point to this, this device and say, mine's not that much different than that. And, but it could be, it's just location in an odd sort of way is always the case, could become distracting to top problems. And I think we have to keep a view of that in terms of the decision being made in the immediate.
Thank you, Bob.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar in this space when it comes to electric vehicles and electrification. And, and I think, you know, to pick up kind of where Bob left off. One question I had asked Kathy, I, I wasn't sure if Michael was going to, if you were going to offer one or more of the similar bylaws that, that you've, as a company, have presented to others in the past, because I think that's one of the challenges that Bob referred to is, you know, we, no one anticipated, you know, there's probably more rules and regulations that apply to farm animals in town than there are to, you know, signage. And, and so having, you know, electrification is here to stay. And, and, you know, climate change and, and moving more towards electric, but also there's the coordination between the utility, you know, when it comes to, to peak usage times. You know, I mean, like one of the questions is, is it anticipated that during, you know, a monthly or an annual peak, that the unit would be either tuned down or shut off?
Yes, so we can certainly, these stations are very malleable in a lot of ways. And so what we can do, I, I certainly have draft ordinances that I could send over to the board. I mean, if we wanted to continue it and sort of, I could change the language to meet the town a little bit better. So that's an option, but certainly just, I guess, to kind of talk a little bit more about the station about the station itself, bless you, is that we can shut them off at night if a store, you know, at store time closing. They do dim in the evening, so as it gets dark, the stations, you know, just like a cell phone, you know, you wouldn't want something bright in your eyes. It's, they do adjust and we can certainly, you know, meet whatever, you know, we're, we're willing to negotiate here, I guess is my point. And, you know, we're willing to do what it takes to be on, you know, to work with the town. Obviously, we want to be there. I am local to the area, but Volta as a whole is a West Coast company that has now grown and is now national. And so we want to make sure that the reputations that we build in our communities are solid and strong. Um, and so we want to make sure that the reputations that we build in our communities are solid and strong. Um, and so we want to be there for the long haul and for the future. And so we are willing to do what we can do to work with the town. Obviously, we also are balancing that same idea with our business model to be upfront, you know, to make sure we're capturing best rate on it, so that way the company, um, you know, can continue to, to exist as it is. Um, but ultimately, you know, we look to ourselves as like, hey, you know, we can certainly sell this ad space, but we're also, you know, committing a public service um, by providing free electric vehicle charging and, you know, ultimately encouraging electric vehicle adoption. You know, it's like the old saying goes, you know, if you build it, they will come, you know, we're trying to be out there, we're trying to be part of this whole process as we continue to evolve. And so I think I, I kind of went on a couple of different tangents there, but more or less, yes, we do have a draft ordinance and yes, we can do a lot with these stations.
So I'm, I'm, I think that would be helpful for, for us because there are the two issues. There's the, you know, the, the locational issue and the, the signage piece. Um, and again, th- this is not going to be the first or last of someone who has an idea that, that comes before us. Um, you know, some of the, some of the fast charge units, um, you know, have, have what looks like two of those side screens, um, on them. So, and, and, and it's probably not a business model that, that's the same. It's probably just trying to get added revenue from designing it that way. Um, but, but I do think it's something that, um, we're, we're not equipped, um, and, and as Bob is saying, it, you know, coming to the appeals board is, is basically per, you know, asking for a, a, a special permission. Um, and, and in this case, I, I can say in the time that I've been on the board, we've not had anything like it um, when it, when it comes to signage. So I think it would be helpful. Um, and it would be helpful, you know, uh, Madam Chair, for us in, in the, uh, the, 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 um, the other board, he's already gone before, um, to understand, you know, this and, and quite frankly, to take on, you know, electric vehicle charging as one of the issues that ought to be looked at.
I, I think that it is something, electrical vehicle charging is something that'll need to be considered by the town on sort of a broader scope. It is not something that is addressed in our bylaws, it's currently drafted. And to the extent that, Michael, you want to share some versions that you've seen in other towns, it's, it's definitely helpful for our planning, person, but it's not something that we could incorporate into the bylaws ourselves that of course has to go through a town meeting. Um, so it wouldn't be something that we could get the benefit of in short order, but it could be something that could be considered by the town more for longer range, um, planning. And you see, we have a
Oh, uh, what, one additional comment that I, um, meant to bring up. What's interesting about this proposal by Volta is that Volta's business interest to the town isn't like your classic idea of signage. So in other words, Stop and Shop has signage, and whether they have a signage that's physically on their building or the sign that sits on the street that says this is Stop and Shop, Volta doesn't have effectively a building or a, a, an address. It is effectively, what we're talking about here is, is a, is, is a billboard.
Now, it's essentially, it's, it's billboard signage, it's smaller, but it's, but that's, that's what it is. I mean, it's not, you don't have a physical presence, they're not advertising their business, it's, it's a revenue mechanism.
And to that point, it, I, maybe I sound like generational ago, but that holds sway with me because, um, that, that directional that we're talking about here for purposes of within the town of North Reading, uh, just from living here, I, I, the only, I, I, I'd be shocked if there, Jerry, you might be able to help me on this. Is there more than one billboard uh, in this entire town? And the only one I can think of is the one that borders the town as you head along 28 towards Reading. And my point is a very simple one, that, um, a lot of our decisions are always based on the idea of what is, in the case of a variance, um, it's CPC, we did it in the last one, what is the need that's being presented by the petitioner? Well, the need here is different from maybe that of a, of an established bricks and mortar interest that has had longstanding or is the beginning of a longstanding business interest that is part of, truly a part of this community. And, um, that is also an, an interest that, um, I've been weighing since the last meeting as well.
Um, if, if I might be able to comment on that, Bob, I mean, certainly, Volta, I guess, I, I agree with you. I mean, we are exactly as you explained it, um, both you and, and, um, the Madam Chairwoman. Um, I would also just say, I guess, you know, that certainly by partnering with Stop and Shop, we are um, in a lot of ways, you know, we're working together and collectively and incentivizes um, EV drivers to shop at Stop and Shop because we're right there or to utilize the Atlantic Plaza um, in other stores that are within that area. Um, so I mean, certainly that is there, uh, but again, it's, you know, we're there to incentive, you know, it's, it, it creates an incentive piece by us placing electric vehicle stations there. I mean, certainly, I mean, personally, for my own interest, I love Market Basket, I shop at Market Basket all the time. However, uh, I certainly understand that if I owned an electric vehicle personally, I would be that much more interested in stopping shopping at Stop and Shop, knowing that I could charge my vehicle while I'm there.
Again, thank you for that.
Thank you. I see that we have, um, Mr. Hayden, the CPC, would you have something you'd like to share with us?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, originally when Volta came to us, we actually were having live meetings, not on Zoom. And they, they shared their paper drawings of what they were gonna do. We got, didn't see any of the, um, what you just saw tonight of the lovely pictures of locations like the other Stop and Shop. Um, but we were under the impression that this was going to be EV charging without this advertising. It was not brought to us that there was going to be advertising on it until I started digging through it and I heard from, uh, someone, um, that said that, oh yeah, that company does that and they do it for advertising, that's what, that's how they make their money. If you go to this many places that have EV chargers and you put your credit card in and you can pay for the electricity you use right there. So that's kind of what we thought was going to happen. We see, they had this lovely, you know, they, they had a, a picture of what the EV charging station is going to be and it says Volta on it. Well, I didn't mind having Volta on a, on the charging station because most charging stations have the name of, of what it is. Uh, so that was one of the reasons why I think we all decided that it would be a good, um, fit in that it would be EV charging and it'll be a great thing there. Then, once we, I heard about this, I started looking into the specifications of the charging station. And anybody driving an EV vehicle going to Stop and Shop for a half an hour or an hour to shop, they'd be better off charging at home because it is such a trickle charge. It's, it's the, the amount of charge that comes off of, of this unit is so small, it's going to take probably two days to charge a car fully. Um, and so from what, that's, that's from what I understand. Um, and you know, you, you can look at what the, 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 uh, the rates of charge are on that, it's, it's very small. Um, and I'll, I'll bet if a person with a Tesla goes in there and, and tries to charge it, they probably won't waste their time trying to get that spot the next time. But the, the most problematic issue with these things are, is the signage. It's not for the people driving, it's people walking. And those people are going to walk in the drive aisles, like they do today, and they're going to be paying attention to a moving sign and not to where they're going. We already have enough trouble with people walking and looking at their cell phones and texting. I don't know, I've almost hit a, a couple of people because they're just not paying attention, they just walk right out in front of you. This is going to happen more with these moving signs because they're changing, they're waiting for the next thing to happen, so they're staring at the sign. So that is, you know, that, that's one of the issues we had with it. And again, it's a, a moving sign which is not allowed in our bylaw, signage by law. So, and I believe, um, we did send two memos, one was basically from the chair, but it was, it was, uh, that was the first one that came out, uh, the beginning of the week, and then another one came out Tuesday night from us, um, from the rest of the board. And, uh, I think the whole board, uh, is not in favor of, of this right now. We are actually backing, um, the building inspector's decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Appreciate your, your input and your background on that. Do we have anyone else in the audience who is here for this public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Hayden, if I might, before, um, Bob Brain for the, is the, uh, it sounds as if the, um, the letter that you sent, um, regarding this application is may not reflect the current position of the commu- committee, or do you, do you want to offer an opinion at this time?
We, we, we sent two letters, um, and I don't know if you've got both of them. Um, Mr. Pierce wrote one, they were both sent by Danielle McKnight, our planning administrator. Um, one was sent probably on the eighth, which is yesterday. Um, because we met on the seventh. Um, and then there was one prior to that, I don't know what the date of that one was, it may have been the sixth or the seventh. Maybe it lasted.
And one from the ninth.
All right, yes, so the, the ninth is the one that came out from when we had our meeting on Tuesday night. And the one from the sixth is probably basically, um, from the, uh, from the chairman of the board, um, because he had, you know, he immediately, um, talked to Danielle about it and had a, you know, wrote a memo. He thought it was coming from him, but Daniel made it from basically, you know, from the, from the board, and everything he said in that, we agreed with. So, and you know, some of, some of the things, um, you know, I, I was the one that, that looked more carefully at the, the plans after I heard, um, from someone that these were really, um, advertising stations more than charging stations. And that's when I found, you know, that the screen size and that can be almost a, as big as a diagonal, uh, sixty inch uh, flat television now, so it's standing on the edge. It's not, you know, it's not horizontal, it's vertical. It may not be quite as wide as, as that, but that's a, a substantial sized screen that they're putting up there. Um, and, you know, you dim it for the nighttime and it's still bright because it's nighttime now. You got it on bright for the daytime because you have to see it over the sunlight. So, you know, it's one of those, it's, it's just another item that makes it more dangerous to walk and to drive in a very, very crowded parking lot. So.
I mean, I think if, if we almost bifurcated this issue and we said, if Stop and Shop or any other retailer in that plaza was asking to put a flat screen TV in their front window with advertising, would we, how would we feel about that? And it's not quite the front window, it's, it's actually in the traffic pattern. And that's what makes me most uncomfortable is, um, just a potential distraction to drivers and pedestrians, because if you're not getting pedestrians' attention, then your advertising isn't working, but if you have their attention, then they're not looking at the cars and the crosswalk and, um, you know, getting, getting themselves safely to and from, um, the storefront. And that is, it is, it's a very busy, active, um, parking, parking lot in town.
If I may, Madam Chairwoman, um, I just, I guess, wanted to other, make another mention too, that our station, so the stations change the static signage, um, anywhere between eight to fifteen seconds as well. I mean, so like, I, I guess the idea of just someone staring and waiting eight to fifteen seconds for something to change, I guess it's just a very long period of time. Um, I would think that someone who is coming to and from in cold or warm weather is going to want to be in and out of their grocery store, doing their shopping, doing their thing. They're not going to be standing there waiting for the next thing to change over to read.
I really, I didn't expect you to be showing movies there, that everyone's going to park and be so excited to watch those. Yeah. Great cinema, I understand that there's, there's, there's static signage which will, um, turn over at some rate of speed. But again, if, if you're not getting someone's attention, then your, your marketing campaign isn't, isn't being effective. Um, so there's, there's, if you didn't think people were going to look at it, you wouldn't bother putting it there, is, is my thought. The, um, you know, electrical vehicle charging, there, there's definitely a plus to that. I, I'm not sure that free charging is necessarily an incentive, I think people ought to be aware of what they're paying for a commodity and for, I mean, not sure that that's a, that's, that has nothing to do with the, the approval here, that's just sort of thought, because it's not free, what you're doing, someone's paying for it, whether it's everyone else who's being asked to look at signage, that's, that's the payment for the service.
Yeah, I mean, that
It's just that, my personal thoughts, I know, and I'm just one person on this board, so everyone has their own, their own, um, opinions on it. But I, I think, um, if we don't have anyone else here in the, in the public, or, um, I think we, I did want to just mention um, the, the latest memo from the CPC, just to reiterate, that is in the file. Uh, CPC is in support of the building inspector's decision to deny the signage permit. CPC does not believe a variance would be warranted as there's no hardship in question. Um, perhaps we should circle back to that hardship question just for the discussion. And while CPC has approved the location of the charging stations through site plan review, the nature of signage was not explained or discussed during the presentation given by the applicant at the CPC's meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Um, the earlier memo to us was a citing, excuse me, provisions in the zoning bylaws which would prohibit signage, flashing signage, moving signage, illuminated signage, intermittent signage. Um, again, a reference to the difficulty of traffic flow for the site. The number, anything additional on the site could reside, result in accidents and incidents. Da, 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 da. And the issue with the pedestrian crossings here. Again, they approved location, but not use of that television LED imagery. Okay, that CPC strongly encouraged CBA not to approve signage, that were our two memos, I just wanted those in the file from, um, our colleagues over at CPC. Before we close the hearing here, um, anything, any further questions for the applicant from board? No, but right, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Green?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, Mr. Green?
Bob Brain, I to close.
The review chief.
I, I.
All right, all right, closed. Thank you, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your, your information and participation. So, this is a going on, now we get to deliberate and decide how we want to, um, move on this for this evening. To I think there are some very good points here, both from the applicant and from the board about, you know, this is, we do have technology that's going to be changing, and we have bylaws that will need to change to be reflective of uh, uses that we want to have in the future. uh uses that we want to have in the future. There's also in our our town master plan or um uh encouragement and movement towards trying to do what we can to um improve and increase the the appearance and usage of Main Street coming through town. That has been something that um hasn't necessarily been as much of a focus in the in the past, and it's an opportunity to to try to make this area better for the town as we go forward. So I I think if, to the extent, Michael, that you provide something to us to be considering for next town meeting in terms of addressing electronic charging and perhaps signage that goes with that, that could be helpful for long range planning. And I think my senses, from what I'm hearing from board members, is as of as of now, I'm not seeing the way to to really permit this under our bylaws as as currently drafted. I don't want to speak for anyone else, um but so please add your your comments or thoughts on this as we, because this is our, this is our deliberation.
So in terms of my position, I'll be kind of clear. I'm disinclined, if not opposed, to the um application. I'm uh no disrespect meant to any of the other positions positions offered with regard to the the merits of the um the charging opportunity that's afforded. And quite frankly, I wish we were all in electric vehicles. Quite it's, that's not at issue here. But that not not being the case, I see this, quite frankly, as quite honestly, is it's it's a it's a an innovative very modest billboard. And the control over the images is is speculative, quite frankly. I know you spoke to that before, Michael. But um there's just, there's a lot of gray in this. And while I think the role of the appeals board is to allow for us to step outside of situations to allow for a graying of black and white to especially accommodate need. Uh I'm just not inclined to believe that the need that is being that this is being presented in, that being uh for uh electric energy use um is really hand in hand with what it ultimately truly comes down to, which is positioned uh scaled billboards. Now, uh if this is a hand in hand um activity with Stop and Shop, which is, again, I know it sounds old fashioned, bricks and mortar. You know, there's nothing to stop Stop and Shop from positioning signage within the store or even along their building, perhaps, which directs users to the side where these, you know, ports could be located. And there are ways around this that would serve Volta and Stop and Shop's interest. But that's not my job to tell you how to perhaps position these. But right now, in terms of the way the purposes of our board and the bylaws that we're we're working within, as Madam Chair is is acknowledged, um I'm just disinclined to believe that this this is an would be an appropriate variance grant. Given that it's hard to measure the nature of this uh going forward. It's not Pandora's box in a classic sense, but the the spec- the the speculative nature that uh could bring about further attempts to uh generate signage similar in nature, but differently placed would put uh the town at a very would be disadvantage disadvantageous to the town if we're trying to maintain um what the town so far has always proposed as, you know, for for look, style and uh propriety. And I guess so.
Before we, unless unless you want to make a motion.
No, I'll I'll just add, I I I think um, you know, the tone's been set. I I I think we just don't have enough information. Um and and, you know, there's so many different pieces, including, I mean, what what Bob had said about Stop and Shop, you know, there there's a, in in this case, there's a a a um a partnership between Volta and Stop and Shop. Um at the first meeting, Michael had had stated that um you know, that they'll be working off of the same meter as Stop and Shop. And I I go back to whether or not, this is just in my mind, is this a Stop and Shop permit or a Volta permit? Because there, you know, in essence, the building that, and and this is what gets me back to the, you know, what how is the zoning set up? Is it the owner of, you know, because we don't have an EV charging uh bylaw, who owns the the actual charging piece for um for this unit? Is is it is it a a contract between Volta and Stop and Shop? And and actually, the permit is with the physical building, you know, to to what Bob said earlier. So I I I just think, the more I think about it, there's there's just more questions that in a town bylaw need to be met before we um we give our first to someone um and and then not, you know, to have a line of people that all want to do, you know, similar things that may have nothing to do with charging. You know, maybe some other type of product or, you know, it might be while you vacuum your car. Who knows? Um but but um I I do think it would be extremely helpful because at at the first meeting, you did say that you you've done uh model ordinances and and bylaws in other places. I I think we could use that. And my suggestion would be um, because I don't think it's going to happen, especially between now and New Year's and, you know, early January. Um, you know, that that maybe um I would suggest you ask for a continuance um until the February meeting and see if we can make some um progress with with looking at this in the future, if that's what both you you agree to and what the rest of the board um, you know, would would agree to. But I I think it it it's still going to take some time. Um, you know, for for a entire process to go through. And um, you know, I I I think the sentiments now are that um if we had a vote right now, I think um it would fail.
And when I think realistically in terms of timing, if we were looking to consider this under a future zoning bylaw, that's not something that's going to happen until you know, until the next town meeting, until the until the bylaw is drafted, until it's presented at the next town meeting and it's up for um and then it's approved by the town. And so that's you know, we're that's spring at the earliest, whenever our spring meeting is. So I I think it is something that the town ought to be considering how we want to handle charging stations, how they are set up, where they get located, um what the what's the requirements the town wants to build around them as part of our long range planning. It's not something that um we have at our disposal at this point or that we will have at our disposal in a in a in a short term, uh just given the 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 timing requirements of amendments to the zoning bylaws through the town meeting process. So um that being said, I don't, I mean, I don't think a continuance is going to help you um at that at this point, nor um technically can, I'm not sure we can give one, given that we've closed the public hearing. So I think at at this point, we need to make a motion on um and what we have in front of us now. And and then um to the extent that we have different provisions in our bylaws going forward, that would give the applicant opportunity to come back to us at a at a later date for something different to be considered. But I think the um, I think the, you know, the issue is is the the combination of of the the signage, which is 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 where the problem is versus the electrical charging stations, which I think would be very much supported and encouraged in the town. But wrapping the two of them together creates, you know, for me, creates a creates an issue and it creates an issue under our bylaws as 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 drafted.
Madam Chair, can the applicant withdraw? Even after public hearing?
If they wanted to do that, I believe that we could consider that.
And at least in that regard, they wouldn't um have to have the um technically, I mean, they wouldn't have to await town bylaw change if some different proposal were to be devised by them. In terms of situating the charging stations or maybe positioning signage, as I think we've all kind of agreed that it is. But that's that's for the applicant to consider. I just um wanted to um get a clarification for that from you. Thank you.
And yet that I think we would we would ex you know, we could accept a request to withdraw if the applicant was making that. I think that the concern that uh Mr. Breen was raising for you is the the prohibition against coming back for a certain period of time.
Yeah.
Under the under the bylaws as currently written. If they change, I can't, I can't promise how that's interpreted under chapter forty A, if that allows you to come back under a different provision, but um I'll leave that to you to sort.
Yeah, um I think the applicant, myself, would like to withdraw, given um the comments from um Mr. Breen and yourself, um Madam Chairwoman. I think it makes a lot of sense um to kind of give us a doorway to propose something different, maybe try to bet go back and reassess internally as to how we can uh proceed, maybe in a different manner, um as well as maybe take it a look, a closer look at maybe drafting a text amendment. I mean, personally, myself, I would love to be involved in that process of helping the town uh come up with something that really meets your master plan to move it forward. Um coming just from my position of just hoping for the future and a better world ahead of us. Um and so I would certainly um would like to withdraw our application at this time in order to in order to consider other options and prevent us from falling into a prohibition period.
Fair enough. And procedurally, Kathy, I don't think we need to vote on that, do we? Or do we need to vote on a I think you're, I think that's, you're entitled to withdraw, so.
I think they could just withdraw.
All right. So, all right, applicant has withdrawn this application. We may have an opportunity to revisit this at some point in the future. And we appreciate you coming and and explaining your technology to us and and the project. It gives the town, you know, definitely something to think about how to address this and issues like this, and particularly charging stations. I mean, they're going to need them. They might need them in many places. So
Yes.
Thank you for, thank you for coming in front of the board. We appreciate your, appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you, members of the board, Jerry as well. I I know you've all worked with us um kind of through all this process. We're not done. We'll be back with something different and better. Uh hopefully, yeah, so hopefully we can move forward. But but thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. There are, I think, we found that we have an applicant who's been very patient waiting for us. I will see my voice is starting to go here, so. So this is, we have three forty Main Street special permit for construction landscaping business applicant Jose G. Sa, who I know from driving by your site that you've been making a lot of progress. And I will just start off by saying thank you for doing the hard work to deal with some um difficult tenants.
Madam Chair, if I could introduce myself, I'm Michael, I'm Michael, sorry, Michael Pinta, um Jose's attorney.
Mr. Pinta, thank you. Please tell us, give us a, give us an update on what's going on.
So the update is uh when we last convened, which was two months ago, um I had told everybody that uh we were just in the process of starting eviction of the landscaper. Um and we all said, well, two months is hopefully enough time. But I'm I'm dismayed to report that uh, you know, I think it's largely because of COVID, but and the whole system has changed about how you get summary process dates. And it's used to be that as a lawyer, I pick the dates. You can't do that anymore. So I literally was having to wait for the court and calling the court constantly, when am I going to get a date? When am I going to get a date? So anyway, long story short, our date for the hearing is a week from today. So the good news is it's coming up. The bad news is, I think we all expected that that was going to already take place. But it hasn't. Um so I fully expect, I mean, we haven't heard from the landscaper at all. Uh I don't even know if they're going to show up. Um but we fully expect, this is really about possession. Um they owe us money, but it's really about possession. So and I don't think there's any defenses here. So I fully expect, assuming the hearing takes place next Thursday, that uh we'll walk out of there shortly thereafter with a a judgment for possession, which at that point, and I'm I'm told um I spot, I spoke to Jerry earlier today, and he had indicated to me that he thought that they were mostly out, which I think is the case. Um but they haven't, they don't, they haven't made it easy for us. So they haven't told us that they're done and they're not going back. And here's the keys. So unfortunately, we have to go through due process and get a court order that says we have possession. Um so that's where I'm reporting to you. And you know, if you want to pick another date, because I think this is going to be over shortly. Um, you know, we can certainly do that. And I can report to you at that time. Hopefully, it's they're out and there's no issue anymore.
Just a quick question with regard to the process. Have they engaged counsel?
I've heard nothing from them. Nothing. They're, you know, not only has my client not received any rent for the last whatever months, um but there's been no responses to notices to quit, no responses to you know, complaint for summary process. Uh and that's why I'm, you know, I'm anticipating that they're probably just going to default. And it sounds like, you know, they've already pretty much left the property. So I'm not even sure that they care about what's going on with the summary process. Um but, you know, I I never say never. You know, who knows what will happen next Thursday?
And Mr. Pinta, do you have other tenants that you are needing to evict as well? Or is this the the last?
Uh, there's another tenant in the same building that we're in the process of evicting as well. That's uh known as a, it's a Payne Auto and Truck Center. And that hearing is on for the same date next Thursday.
Okay.
Same question, is he retained? Or is there been a um?
Same same answer. No, no contact from anybody.
No response from anyone?
Nope. And that and and that particular tenant owes a substantial amount of money. So that one's more than just about possession.
The reason I ask is that um so um very clear understanding that you're very likely going to get the summary judgment. The question is more of a practical one. Are the courts, this isn't like a uh uh residential tenant, if you will, where if they came back after the fact, the court might be sympathetic to their interests, especially during these times. Since this is a commercial uh tenancy, that really is, and that's using the word tenancy uh quite liberally in your case. Is there any chance that the court is going to um give them a second shot at this even after judgment is entered? Or are they just going to box them in as they probably should be?
I mean, you never know what a judge in a district court is going to do, obviously, but I totally agree with you. I mean, you never know what a judge in a district court is going to do, obviously, but I totally agree with you, is that if this was residential, there's all kinds of wild cards and that can show up. But in a commercial eviction, especially where one owes a lot of money, there's really, there's really no defenses.
You know, I asked because, I asked because if the date we get, we take here for you is, is practical, but it sounds like it will be because it is commercial tenancy.
Yes.
For a commercial judge, a judgment against the business interest as opposed to an individual. I just asked that for practical purposes of going forward.
Yeah, and I would concur with you. There's, generally speaking, there's much less leniency by the court that you'll see on the residential side. And for good reason, because somebody's going to get thrown out of their home. So it's, it's totally different.
And it's not that, and it's not that. And it's not that they were restricted because of COVID, you know, to, to doing whatever on that property either.
No, they, to my understanding, they were running their businesses until fairly recently. So, no.
Thank you. I very much appreciate you doing the hard work. I know it's very hard to get tenants out, but to go through the eviction process, particularly with the courts during COVID. And your patience waiting tonight. Kathy, if you could make sure that they're on the front of the agenda.
That would be appreciated.
Time, because I, I know you, you waited, waited very patiently through some.
So the commercial landscaping interest that's trying to go in there on behalf of your client, is that looking for electronic signage as well, or should we just kind of take that as it comes?
I think we should take it as it comes, especially in light of your opinions earlier.
We, we are encouraging all efforts to help make Main Street as more attractive in our community.
Not Route One.
Not like Route One. So your efforts to clean up this site are very much appreciated. It is, it is the first thing you see as you drive in from the north, though.
It's been dramatic. Thank you.
That's making, making big strides there. Is January's meeting? Is that sufficient? I mean, and if it's not, feel free to just, to give a note to Kathy, and we can bump you to the next one.
Well, I, I, I know right now, I'm actually going to be on vacation for those first two Thursdays in January.
Good for you.
Which I'm not going to apologize for, by the way.
Feel free to jump in.
So I would, yeah, I, I don't want to do Zoom while I'm away, though. So I would ask.
Is that a possibility? Can we actually turn off Zoom when we leave?
You know, a true vacation would be probably not taking any electronics with me at all. But that's not going to happen. It's impossible.
We'll let you skip a Zoom hearing with us. But I suppose that means we should look for a February date.
Yeah, is it February 10th? Is that the date?
I believe that would be our date. That's not, um, not this on a school vacation week, is it? It's your two weeks.
I don't know where, but I think it falls after.
Yeah, it's after.
All right, let's put that down. If you would like to request an extension to February 10th. And Kathy, again, just please put the applicant top of the agenda. They have been.
Thank you.
Will do. Patient with, with our hearing. Kathy, we're going to have to send you home. You're, you sound like you're something.
I am home.
You're home. Listen, get you off this Zoom call. So, Mr. Pinta, Mr. Sa, thank you very much for, for coming. We have you on our agenda for Feb. 10. Enjoy your vacation and your holidays.
As well to all of you have been joyful holidays.
If you do succeed at your hearing, then I strongly suggest that when February's date approaches, that if you've got any designs or plans that you're going to use for formally putting together a more practical presentation, that would be much appreciated by us.
Oh, you mean in reference to what my client intends to do on the property? Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to have something together for the next meeting.
Right, thank you.
Okay, first things first, we want to get them out.
No, yes, again, I'm, I'm quite, I'm sure, good luck, good luck on Thursday. We'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Assuming, assuming luck, assuming less luck and good, just the process working, then I, we, we just don't want to keep you delayed in this process as well. Especially since you've made such great progress with regard to this, to the location so far. We've taken notice, and I think a lot of people have, so congratulations.
All right, thank you. Good enough.
Have a great.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think the only thing left, left on our official business is to approve our minutes from last month. And I'd just like to make a motion to approve those. Do we have a second? And was that you, Bob? Did you second?
Yes, Barbara and second.
Thank you. And then, all in favor?
Barbara and I.
Thank you.
Ben Ragucci, aye.
Right. I'll prove them too. Thank you for writing them up, Kathy. Big night, guys. Good job.
So now we're on calendar for both January 13th and February 10th.
Yep.
All right.
And Jen, do you know, Madam Chairman, do you know if that's your way?
I don't.
Okay.
But I will, I will share that with you.
Just so we can, we can maintain quorum in.
Oh, that's true.
No, if it, it's going to be, just reach out, let, let us.
The February date is the, I think, the more, more important of those for quorum. Well, actually, we don't have anyone. If, if I am if, if I'm not here in January, whoever is sitting in for that one will just need to watch this fascinating video on the, on the garage extension. And then they can still vote on that. But the, the, the Main Street one, since we've had multiple hearings on that, that I think will require the three of us to
Most certainly.
To continue on. That's great. Anything else?
No, I know we're live. This was our first meeting, so I'll, I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Ben. I will, all in favor, and everyone have a lovely holiday. Enjoy. Hope you get some time with your families and some time to relax and enjoy it. And we won't see each other until, until January, till the new year.
Happy New Year.
See you in town.
Holidays, everyone. Thanks. Bye bye.